Good afternoon, it is now September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, five-thirty P.M. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Ms. Mary McKenna.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for this gorgeous day, for the rain that nourishes our souls and the plants and the flowers and the trees and helps our gardens grow. We thank you for each person in this room. We ask your continued blessing on all of us, on our families, on our city, on our community. We ask that this day we do your bidding and remember you in our hearts in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. We will now move on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the name that I have on the list is Ms. Ida Shasso.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I am here on behalf of the Greater Orange Area Chamber of Commerce and just wanted to thank the city for everything that they did for Monte Gras Weekend, as we all called it. The chamber partnered with the city. The city had a festival and a Friday night parade. We had the Saturday night parade. And for many of you that were out there, the ones of you that couldn't be out there, it was great to see families out there with their children on all the things that the city had that was free for those kids to use. But it was a great weekend. It was a great partnership between the city and the chamber, and we appreciate everything you and your staff have done to make this a great weekend for our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ida.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, if not, we'll move on to consent agenda. January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Childs, a second from Ms. McKenna, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Thank you, motion passes. Proclamation. Okay, so we have two proclamations today, and the first proclamation is the Angels of Love Day. Do we have people here today for the Angels of Love? All right. I'm happy. Thank y'all for bringing this to us and allowing us to read it in the public. It's an honor to do this. So proclamation from office of the mayor, City of Orange, whereas Stars of Gate City Number Fifty-Seven is a nonprofit organization of Orange, Texas that promotes love, and whereas Stars of Gate City Number Fifty-Seven is a part of the Grand Court Order of the Eastern Stars Prince Hall Affiliated, State of Texas, and whereas each year the Stars of Gate City Number Fifty-Seven will designate the Sunday before Christmas as Angels of Love Day in honor of the senior citizens of our community, and whereas we hope you will join the Stars of Gate City Number Fifty-Seven of Orange, Texas, Prince Hall Affiliated, in celebrating our senior citizens that are in nursing homes and assisted living facilities in Orange, Texas, and whereas Stars of Gate City Number Fifty-Seven hope to generate public awareness of the importance of our senior citizen community and showing them that they are not forgotten and are dearly loved. Therefore, I, Larry Spears, Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, extend on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Orange, do hereby proclaim that Sunday before Christmas as Angels of Love Day in the City of Orange, Texas. Congratulations. So ladies and gentlemen, before these ladies sit down, there's something I want to talk about real quick that a lot of you may not understand. So I actually got a small history lesson in a church pew several weeks ago. But one of the things that I want to honor and recognize all of you, as well as those who are not here, in the passing of Ms. Bellfield, this group of ladies, along with several others, were there to take care of her needs, the family's needs. They were there to conduct the ceremonies and to do things that were of honor to her and her family. And I just want to recognize you in public and say thank you for that. That's awesome. Thank you. All right, to our next proclamation, William Boy Brown Day. So I had to get on the internet and look this one up, and I was amazed at the story of this gentleman, and it is an honor for us to join in with several other cities from around the Golden Triangle to honor Mr. William Brown. So let me read to you some of the things. So proclamation, office of the mayor, whereas William Boy Brown was a nationally acclaimed disc jockey who found his household name Boy in Beaumont, Texas. His career dates back to KJET radio station where he disc jockeyed for seventeen years. And whereas Boy was born April third, nineteen twenty-six, in Savannah, Georgia, he attended college at Savannah State College. Boy was blessed with four children with Ms. Luvinia Brown, Rosalind Broda, Vincent, and Virgil. In nineteen fifty-six, Mr. Brown married Mary Ann Brown and blessed him with four more children, Billy, Rodrick, and Regina, and Kevin, who are both deceased. Whereas the journey was incredible and the path he paved left an indelible mark on the hearts of so many people, Mr. Brown was a lifetime member of the NAACP. He worked and played with the best and brightest in the business, and his KJET team became his family, and together they broke barriers and became the first DJs to play soul music in southeast Texas. We still need some more soul. Now therefore, I, Larry Spears, Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, reflect on the positive contributions of Mr. William Boy Brown and the KJET legendary disc jockeys. They have bestowed upon the community and do hereby proclaim that this, the twenty-second day of February, two thousand twenty-two, as William Boy Brown Day in Orange, Texas, and urge the community to reflect on the everlasting impact that Mr. Brown's legacy and the legendary KJET DJs. Congratulations. Okay, on to city announcements, city staff announcements and city events. Mr. Trey Hand?
Yes, sir. So Mayor, to follow up Ida's comments, we as the city staff always appreciate the resources that are available to us to be able to schedule an event and manage the logistics behind it. But the CDB staff, which I'm representing tonight, would specifically like to acknowledge our park staff, our street staff, the police department, the fire department, and of course, without, we have to acknowledge Mike Zito and Steve Jones in terms of the great co-chairs of this, because there's so much planning that goes on in advance in terms of getting to that point to execute it. And with beautiful weather like we had Saturday, we were able to make it special. And because of your support as a council in terms of the budgeting process, which we don't take for granted, we had the budget to be able to offer free opportunities for our families to come out. No gate fee, Houston party rental rides, the food vendors did well. So overall, we were very pleased with it, and we're going to improve upon it as we move forward. So that being said, I have a save the date for everyone. Our next major tourism event will be Art in the Park, along with the classic car show scheduled for Saturday, April second. Thank you.
April second?
Yes, Saturday, April second.
And before closing out the city announcements, so since I couldn't respond during the citizen comments, I'm trying to follow the rules so Mike doesn't get upset with me. I'll see it now. What I wanted to say to you, Ms. Ida, in the chamber, we said it earlier during the EDC, I wanted to thank you for your hard work, and I wanted to thank you for everyone that put together such a wonderful time. What I spoke about in the previous meeting was, I have a photo, which I'm gonna find a way to share it, maybe get it on KOGT. I took a photo from top of our float before anybody got started, and it almost brought tears to my eyes. And I know some people may say, why would you cry? I know what God showed me for this community years ago, and to see thousands of cars in an area where people used to say, I'll never go over there, because it's criminals or thugs, and nobody's car got broken into. There were no issues. And to see everybody being a family in this community, that's what God wants for us.
Yes.
And so thank you for bringing events that bring people together.
Yes.
Because that's what God wants.
Amen.
So thank you.
Yes.
Okay, on to item eight. Sorry, I get emotional, y'all. Presentation of certificate of distinction to the City of Orange from the National Community Development Association for Utilization of CARES Act Funding. So we have a wonderful award this evening that's going to go to the City of Orange CARES Act Funding. And so the CARES Act Funding recipients, the following organizations were awarded City of Orange funds from the CARES Act. The Orange Community Action Association, which where they installed an air filtration system. They were also granted funds to continue feeding seniors in spite of the coronavirus pandemic. They also bought protective shields for the transportation buses. Next is Orange Christian Services. They bought a filtration system for the building, along with personal protective equipment, supplies, and food. Next, we have the James Hope Center, which bought backpacks full of personal protective equipment, CDC guideline brochures, and food for the homeless of our city. Then we have the Greater Orange Area Literacy Program, which bought personal protective equipment supplies in order to continue assisting their clients. And last but not least, the Jackson Community Center, which bought a body scan thermometer and enough personal protective equipment supplies to hopefully get them through this pandemic. So CDBG was recognized during the two thousand twenty-two National Community Development Association Winter Conference that was held virtually for the efforts of CDBG and the city to help combat the coronavirus pandemic. And I just want to say thank you and congratulations. And that goes out to my man Kelvin Knopf and all his people. We appreciate you guys. So we have a glass plaque. That's really nice. Thank you. Congratulations, y'all. Okay, now we have ordinances. Final reading. Consider an ordinance by the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, declining to approve the change in rates requested in Energy Texas EETIs or company statement of intent filed with the city on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, in finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance was considered was open to the public and in accordance with Texas law. The first reading was February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, council, good evening. This is the second reading of the ordinance in which we agree with the law firm that we want to decline Entergy's proposed rate change.
Okay. We definitely want to decline rate change for sure. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
He's waving.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Okay, motion passes. On to item nine B. You mean he's politicking in a meeting?
No, he didn't know what he said yes to, so that's okay.
Nine B, consider an ordinance granting a franchise to Waste Management of Texas Incorporated to operate a commercial closed container garbage collection service in the City of Orange, providing the terms, conditions, obligations, and limitations of such service, providing indemnity to the city, retaining authority to regulate rates, providing for franchise payments, and providing for severability. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, council, Waste Management, as we know, they have our residential contract, but this is so they can do a commercial pickup for those folks who want to use them.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Nine C, consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, disannexing from the corporate boundaries of the City of Orange, Orange County, Texas, a two-point-eight-zero acre tract of property located within a thirty-two-point-six-eight acre tract of land and a part of the John Harmon Survey, abstract number twelve, Orange County, Texas, and being a part of a one-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-two-four acre tract, recorded in volume six-oh-nine, page one-nineteen, Official Public Records of Orange County, Texas, with said tract was conveyed to Orange Real Gardens Development, a Louisiana Limited Liability Company, and providing for the following: findings of fact, effective date, filing, severability, and proper notice and meaning. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, this is a property located on Highway one-oh-five near the intersection of Highway sixty-two, and this property is located in the future Orange Gardens subdivision. But since we're not annexing that subdivision, then it really doesn't make sense to keep this two-point-eight acres within the city, so.
Okay. We have any comments or questions for Mr. Knopf? Okay, I would like to make the comment that if, in order to address this issue as to why the council went to this decision, is that with us not being able to provide them water and sewer services, we did not feel that it was in the best interest to annex them and yet not be able to provide them with proper services that other people in the district are receiving. So we decided to disannex. So do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will aye as well. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Knopf. Item ten A, consider a resolution awarding a contract to the Horseman Store and an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand for the uniforms for Public Works employees. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. This is just a new contract to provide uniforms for the city, for my local business instead of one outside the area.
Wonderful. That's great.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Okay, and I say aye as well. And thank you to the Horseman Store for being there to support the city. Thank you. Okay, item ten B, consider a resolution awarding a contract to DXI Industries for liquid chlorine for the treatments of the water well fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of a previous contract to Spark Horn.
Got you. Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. On to item ten C, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with BDS Constructors, DBA MK Constructors for the IH10 Adams Bayou Waterline Relocation. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. This is just a payment that will be completely and utterly reimbursed to us by the state, so it's just a formality.
Okay. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Ms. McKenna, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item eleven A, consider a motion approving the resignation of Rose Seymour from the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board effective February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, sir. So Mayor and council, I just want to acknowledge the service that Ms. Rose Seymour did provide to the CDB Advisory Board through the years. As we all know, she's a very important part of the Train Depot Committee as well in terms of reservations and what have you. But we do appreciate her service, and she has decided to resign at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Mr. Trey Hand, is there a way for, I know when I first got on city council, when someone would resign or step down after many years of service, we used to give them like a certificate saying thank you. Can we see about doing that again?
Sure. Yeah, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you, sir. Item eleven B, consider a motion appointing Megan Lane to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board for a two-year term effective beginning February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, through February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Trey Hand?
So most of us may know Megan as Megan Romero Lane, who just recently was married, I think, in the last several months. But Megan basically has earned a bachelor of science degree in urban planning from Texas A&amp;M. She has interned and spent a summer working with Kelvin's Planning Department in the past. She currently is working with the Orange County EDC as a business development manager, and basically she will serve a two-year term from an advisory board perspective, working with the city, subject to your approval.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
It's an honor to say aye for my former student.
Awesome.
Great.
Okay, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Trey Hand. Item eleven C, consider a motion reappointing Marcia Guillory to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor and council, Ms. Guillory's term was up, and she has agreed to serve another term.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
A second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Motion passes. Okay, item eleven D, consider a motion authorizing the Orange County Mosquito Control District to fly low altitudes as required for the application of insecticides for the abatement of mosquitoes within the limits of the City of Orange, Texas. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor and council, we do this every year. You know, the plane's got to fly kind of below where they're supposed to fly, so we have to approve that. So if y'all vote no, let me know, so I'll leave first.
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I think the motion was from Ms. Henigan?
Yes.
And the second one was from Ms. McKenna. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coombs. Item eleven C, eleven E, consider a motion approving hotel occupancy tax funding for services to the LaBeach Architecture Group for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand for architectural services for the renovations to Old City Hall. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor and council, as you recall, last meeting that we did approve LaBeach Architectural Group to go out and study the old city hall, give us some recommendations. But as we had talked about in the past, those services and what we intend to do with that building, if that comes to fruition, that's part of what we're going through here, those funds and those charges could be paid for through hotel occupancy tax. And so that's just an official approval from y'all here.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Item eleven F, discussions regarding the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for first round funding for the following projects: wastewater treatment plant classifier reorientation, Simmons Force Main Repair, Meckler Manhole Repair, Alley Payne Pipe Repair, Sunset Oaks Manhole Repair, pumps for lift station rehab, materials only at this time, pipe bursting and spot repair. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir. Simmons Force Main is right on the road. The other day it ruptured. When we were getting down to fix that, we discovered that there was four or five other clamps in the same area. Being that that's in the ARPA project to put two new pumps in that area, we're going to go ahead and try, of course, after your approval, to repair about sixty foot of that force main, so we don't have another burst. The Meckler Manhole is the one you can drive down Bob Hall Road. You look to the right, you'll see where the cars have been scraping their bottom, getting through the hole. It's collapsing. It's fixing to leave. If you go about a hundred feet to the east down Alley Payne, you'll see others on the side of the road, sinkholes coming up. The old clay pipe is giving way, which may be one of the causes why the Meckler Road Manhole is sinking as well. The Sunset Oak Manhole is behind a gentleman's house, and four sheets of plywood can't cover it. And it's in between an apartment building and his house, so another. Trying to keep it off of our budget and use these grants to do what we can. The pumps and lift stations is basically like us mounting the pumps that we bought, say, in November, when y'all approved those. We need to actually start installing them and buying materials to get everything installed. So if we buy the materials, it's cheaper for us to get it and have it in stock than it is for a contractor to buy it and charge us a percentage. Pipe bursting, we have two packages going out. They were approved today by the ARPA administrator. They come back to us. The first one is going to be deep spot repair, well beyond what we can reach with our normal utilities, probably thirteen, fourteen feet deep. We don't have the trenching boxes to deal with or the equipment. So we're going to put seven of those there in locations such as Roseland and other areas, mostly Roseland. And then we're going to do another package, which is about eight thousand linear feet of pipe bursting, which is in Lilac and several other locations. I think the next meeting we have, we'll actually have the information to you spotting out exactly where. But again, it is about eight thousand linear feet of gravity and force main being repaired. Of course, this is all subject to y'all's approval, and this is just the second batch of things we're trying to get accomplished to get us going.
Okay. That's a lot of pipe. That's over a mile, almost a mile and a half.
It's one-point-six miles, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Just a discussion. And just kind of let y'all know, you know, we've talked about some of these projects in general, then as we kind of drill down, we kind of want to bring more specifics.
Well, I'm happy you brought it up, because the ARPA funds, a lot of people have been asking, what are y'all doing with your ARPA funds?
Yes.
And the people, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, it's cool to see the businesses that have come several years ago, the Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks, that's all wonderful. But, you know, here it is, four-point-one million dollars that we're spending to fix the things that have been forgotten for fifty, sixty years. And so a lot of times people say, what are y'all doing? Well, you're not even going to see it. But when you flush that toilet, you'll know.
Yes, sir. We've also finally ironed out an SOP, a procedure for us to actually do this properly. So in the future, I'll be bringing discussion points to you so that we're making you aware of what we're wanting to do. Generally, the next meeting, we'll have those packages ready for you to approve, and then we'll move forward with that. So that has been hashed out. We do have that path made for.
Man, if you can just fix sixteen straight, you can run for president.
That's textile. Textile.
I hear you. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Appreciate you. Okay, on to item reports. Mr. Coombs?
A couple of things. Did want to relay a couple of things that the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission is doing currently. As many of y'all know, they are doing a regional broadband expansion initiative, so they would encourage folks to participate in their little survey. And they can, you can find more information about that on the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission website. And also, they are also going to have two public meetings for regional public transportation coordination plan. One of them will be March fifteenth at ten a.m., one will be March seventeenth at three p.m. So that's some good stuff there, and that is all I have at this time. So that's some good stuff there, and that is all I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coombs. All right, do we have city council report? Mr. Childs, we'll let you go first.
Okay. I want to thank Mr. Ingram from my left report last council meeting, how quickly you had me out there and visited with me, I really appreciate that. I have some citizens on Guideline that are reporting some very cloudy and dark water. I sent an email today, so y'all have that. And as far as Mardi Gras, anyone that says there isn't anything to do in Orange, you're not trying hard enough, you just need to go out and do it. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Childs. Ms. McKenna?
Kudos to everyone involved with Mardi Gras. Great time, great weekend, and better yet to come and years to come, so thanks to the entire community.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Henigan?